But if we don't do something before May 1, anybody can put a dispenser to right next to that.
True.
So we have to, either we do something or we don't do something.
Okay, well.
Wasn't called, didn't I call for the question? Excuse me?
Oh.
Yes.
Yes, you did.
Did I call for the question?
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did.
And I have not been recognized when I put my hand once again.
I'm sorry.
You're right.
Because I'm not a bully in this group, I rarely get recognized. Sorry for my outburst.
Call the question, please.
Grant?
What is the question?
Oh, the motion, this is what I put now. The motion was to accept Larry Lewis's thematic of a thousand foot, I'll put the word buffer right, a thousand feet from Neighbors for Kids and nowhere else in the city.
Okay, not, so we're accepting.
The thousand-foot buffer, if you will, around Neighbors for Kids.
Just, just Neighbors for Kids, not the rest of the thousand-foot buffers.
Right.
Okay. And that, that motion was accepted?
Yes.
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Gambino?
I'm staying.
If, if I move on.
I, I will say that one of the merits, in my opinion, of doing this action is, is just for Neighbors for Kids because of the fluid nature of what's going on there. And then we might actually be saving a, a, a business from all the turmoil that might take place in the communities if they should become charter. That's my point.
Could I, another order here? Robert, I don't think you, are you involved in this or?
No.
How can you abstain?
Because I wasn't. Am I legally allowed to abstain? Have you read it?
You can't.
Can't?
You can.
Can't.
Mr. Mayor.
My, my only remaining question is schedule. Is the City Council ready for a redraft, changing that to Section 2 of this draft ordinance, 302? Are you ready for it to come back to you at on St. Pappy's Day to start the adoption process? It'll be March, the very next council meeting. Are you ready? Do you need to review more sections of the draft?
I'd mostly for myself. I'm thinking of it.
I'm ready.
I'm ready. Well, it's gotta be voted on, so let's do it.
So we'll schedule, proposed ordinance number 302, I'm not gonna read the whole title because it's very long, for the March 17 council meeting to start the adoption process.
I will make that motion.
Okay.
I'm seconding it.
Call please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Thank you. I don't have any more unfinished business, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
One of the new business. I have made four leases.
Olson.
Do you like to say someone else?
Thank you.
Can I read the last paragraph of this letter? We received, or actually, the Deco Bay Harbor Commission, Parks Commission received the letter. One page. And I'll read the last paragraph. Unfortunately, we cannot sign our names. This concern is not for one family or one property owner, but a group of several residents and a number of property owners who want to see the city do the right thing and have city business without prejudice and favoritism. You are not performing the duties of your office in a prudent manner and even neglected your fiduciary duties to the cities. I'm offended by this. If, if a group of 10 people wrote this letter, sign it. Otherwise, this goes on rants and raves.
That's what I see.
I'm offended by this. There's also reference to one of our council members having purchased a piece of property he'll benefit from it. I'm offended by that. That's all I have to say about this.
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't they want to sign it?
That's my point. I mean, I, if it's signed, I would say, yeah, let's talk about it, great. But this is like going on rants and raves and reading your little old aunt that's got green candies.
Kind of like being part cat, you know, the phone will give change. If you know what I mean.
Anyway. I do agree with the fiduciary responsibility.
I do too, but if they're gonna, if you've got the courage to send a letter like this, sign it.
Sign it.
Sign it.
In 2006, there was a, the council had voted to eliminate the leases so they could pursue a walkway around the harbor. And that was the main reason they decided not to renew the leases, as I understand it. They, they made that decision because the council at that time wanted to have the beautification part of the harbor and the walkway around it and, and other things, as I understand it. So some of those things are still pending. And even if that was signed, I'd be inclined to vote no on getting in the lease thing yet at this time.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. President? I'm trying to figure out where it, the word, which paragraph it talks about.
Oh, okay, it's, um.
The second one up.
Second one up, is that right, sir? No, it's on the long piece.
It says, "Thank you." The last paragraph, second one.
Is this the bottom? Yeah, no, it's the, yeah, all right, it's the second paragraph from the bottom.
Right.
Okay. Is this the part that refuses one of those?
That's, I, I think that that's just a slight at the end comment, mention the line somewhere. See the last sentence, John?
Oh, I do.
Okay. It's, "Bovine manure."
Well, I, I think that this is patented, that, that paragraph supposes things that are patently untrue.
That's correct.
And I've got the title that doesn't have anything to do, you know, with property.
I'd like to, I'm sorry.
Yes, correct.
For recognition. I'd like to go on like you're saying that I think that this bit of literature is a very cowardly way to try and get some shots in. I'm not going to try and speculate as to who or why. I think those, those things would be best left to the conscience of the people who decided to draft this in the first place. But only a coward acts in this manner. That's all I have to say about it.
Do we need a motion to not re-adopt at this time?
To, I'm sorry, to.
Do we need a motion to not re-adopt the board leases at this time?
Only if, if the council wants to take action on the board leases, then you would define that by a motion. But if no actions to be taken.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
And I have, and my, my issue on this thing is that I don't have enough information to even understand all the implications of it. But I do recognize the fiduciary responsibility that goes with this. So I'm kinda saying that we would, you know, I don't wanna drop this, I wanna learn more about it. And I, I, I don't like the idea of having this sort of thing out there with the implication that we're not performing our fiduciary responsibilities. Somehow or another, this needs to get addressed. That would be my take.
My take would be hers, if you're, you know, manned up to it, per se. If not, I don't think it's worth discussing. And we just, we spent our time on it, we need to.
But there's, but there's officials.
Information already available for reconception of, this has been hashed over many times, of course.
See, I'm new, so you have to help me here, okay?
They can set you up tons of documents.
Okay. Then, then, then on my own time, I can get familiar with this. And it sounds to me that we don't have to really do anything.
No.
So I'm okay with that.
Okay.
This is a drive, excuse me.
Sure, go ahead.
It's a drive-by. See how we can, before we could even consider anything, that we can't cross an avenue.
Okay, alright, I get it. That's, uh. Correspondence, Mary?
Three items of correspondence this evening. Two are from Neighbors for Kids. I'll, I'll review the first one, which is an announcement and I believe an invitation, yes, invitation, to the March Family Literacy Event on Thursday, March 5th, 6 o'clock to 7:30 PM, celebrating Dr. Seuss's birthday. They're going to have a Seussical, Seussical Literacy Slam. Not sure I'm saying that right.
You said it right.
Alright. They would like to know, please RSVP by tomorrow. And by calling the phone number on the letter, they need an accurate head count for their receiving. The second letter is also relating to the Seussical Literacy Slam. And they have attached a proclamation, they're asking the City Council if the council would authorize the mayor to sign said proclamation. I understand that they'd rather not have him sign it until Pappy arrives. But if the council wants to consider authorizing the mayor to sign the Read Across Deco Bay proclamation for the Neighbors for Kids, then a motion would be in.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that when we approve having you sign the Read Across Deco Bay proclamation to be read at the Neighbors for Kids event.
One second.
Motion made in second. Call please.
Sparks?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
The third item of correspondence is an email. You should all have a copy attached to it, a photo of whales hanging in an office.
It's a blue whale.
It is a blue whale, and a baby blue whale.
Does it, are you sure it smells of that?
Well, the appraisal, I know, but the appraisal called, the Fraser called it a blue whale. With a, with a G-tailed snail. Anyway, detached from fins and carved large tail fin. City became aware of this through a Chamber of Commerce, where it came into City Hall last week and brought in an email and said, you know, chamber's got no place to put these sculpted carved large whales. I think the big one is 99 inches long, maybe 82 inches wide with the fin. So brought it in City Hall, wondering if the city would be interested. I said, well, we've got a council meeting coming up, I can ask the council. So here we are. I contacted Harmony Miller, and she confirmed they do still have them. And she's the one that sent the appraisal, the photo, et cetera, et cetera. So just asking if the City Council might be interested.
I have a rubber shark that's gonna be moved.
If, if the council's not interested for a city location, just one of my, my first thought was this should be hanging in the whale center, in the whale-watching capital of the world.
Right, yes.
I don't think anybody's talked to Parks and Rec yet.
Yeah.
It's your, it's your idea.
I think I see the point.
I do too.
Unless you're interested.
Would I interfere with those fans up there?
We have to square the fans out.
We talked about ripping out all the drop ceiling next door and hanging them in the office, but then I'd like to see Shark right there.
I think it's a gorgeous piece, and I'm always in favor of public art displays. However, all of these considerations, and of course, you know, the idea of moving the fans would be very generous on your part. But I don't see that we might have facility or any place that would be appropriate to, to display these.
Steve? Can't, can't we send it down to the Parks Commission?
I think that would be a good idea.
And have them review it?
Absolutely.
One area that was mentioned was a community hall. Then I heard through, through the great hall. But, but the Parks Commission would.
That's true, some of that sounds great for the Parks Commission.
Yeah. Excuse me. Alright, great.
We'll, we'll copy this for them, they'll meet, they'll meet on the 18th of the month, so we'll send it to them.
Pretty invention, I was like, that we were the whale-watching capital of the world, hoping that, you know, putting out of their, like, if they don't want to donate it to us, so.
We certainly try.
We could make a big deal about it, you know? We could get it in both newspapers. If they don't hate it. Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's great.
Plus, you know, if they donated it to the city, they could void it off on their.
You know what we'd add? If we put it back. At the last, we did the terminal, that's always.
Put a law service on it. Perfect.
So maybe we do one.
Want some free albums, huh?
Yeah.
They're donating. Right, right. Might as well. It's like, they do. They're basically writing the articles.
Well, I tell you, the pictures are beautiful.
Wow. Those are pretty beautiful.
They're just tall. She's approached the legal.
I think they're replacing Shark's problems too.
Okay, yeah. We'll get that to the Parks Commission for their consideration and recommendation.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
That's all the correspondence, thank you.
Okay. Ready to have your staff report?
Yes, I have, kind of an update on the Lincoln County Emergency Grant. I have to hurry. And I came up with a thousand-person trauma kit for the emergency trailer. It's, it's around $2,300. And it, it comes with everything for community trauma. There's everything from, from turmikets to splints to, to bandages, more, everything. You could possibly imagine, body bags with toe tags. That was like, at the very bottom, I thought that was kind of interesting. But, it said body bags, 16 body bags with toe tags.
That's pretty optimistic, with thousands of people.
But it's, it cuts in five duffel bags, and this is through a company that we, we order from, Global Industry, and they'll give us municipal pricing on it. It's usually, it's about a 20, I've seen the same kit in other catalogs up to $3,000. So that's not a bad deal. We put the asking, I think we asked for $2,400 in our.
Oh, no, the half of the total cost was 1100, 1200?
Yeah, that's right. So that's kind of where around. And I think it would be perfect for our trailer. And there's some, I guess one of the duffel bags has the, the shelf life stuff, and it lets you know that some of the, like, the ammonia inhalants. There's a few things that, that do have shelf life, that they keep separate, and the other stuff could go on. A hundred space blankets, I can't remember the list, but I'll, I'll have, like, next time we have a meeting, I'll tell the council, you know, you'll have to fly it out, everything is in this thing, great. Okay, so the next item is Indian Trail. We had a car driving off, there's, the road's quite wide, or it's not wide at all really, but it narrows down almost like a one-lane, and if cars get in there, we've had several cars really good close, but finally had a car go off down in there. And so what we need to do is widen that. I've got a bit from the, there's two asphalt contractors, so I'm gonna go ahead and take the, the lowest bid on that. It's one of those where we have to get it done. And so there's some repairs on Indian Trail that we're gonna be doing.
Robert?
What is it? I mean, what is the amount?
Well, one of them came in around 2,005, and then I think the other one was 2,300 or something. But it's not widening the entire road, it's just that narrowing the area. And they have to put base coating to build up on the side to get it wider, so two cars. So it maintains that same distance. And then what I'll probably like to do is we have some old guardrail leftover for other projects and stuff. It's, it's put a guardrail without having to purchase one, if we use what we have in stock. And it's not a very good piece, but I've heard there's cars down in there that are buried in this, it's kind of a gully, but the culvert's in good shape, it just needs to be widened and so it's a safe, safe road. And so I'm moving forward on that. The, we've had some pumps go out in wastewater, it's normal stuff, but you might notice in the next, that we lost our, we have a hot power washer that heats up really hot to the current users, and they get clogged with grease and sewer stuff. And down, I think they, there are, the device that, that shows the level and stuff of the, of the pumps, the big wet loss, a hundred gallons a minute, or a thousand gallons a minute of sewer coming in. So it's just some equipment that has failed at the wastewater plant, we're gonna wash that up, pump kind of hot power washer replacement. Coast Street is being, well, Civil Last is doing the over, so it's low case. We've been getting lots of calls, you guys might get asked, what do they do on our Coast Street? Are they starting that? They're really doing a concept design for how the new water main and the stormwater and sanitary sewer lines are all gonna be laid out. So they're gonna put the original lines, and then where the upgraded lines propose should be, and that's gonna be from Ellison Street, actually from the bridge, all the way to South Wall Street. So the roads are really marked up, folks are asking, what's all the, what's going on? Are they starting now? They see the yellow, the orange, and the blue, and the green, and, so, just to keep the council updated. So, and then I'm moving forward with the, I already talked about Al's in Southern Stock down here. So that's kind of it. The crew's staying busy with projects, and we've got our temporary guy's just hanging in there, and he's doing a really good job. So we have one of our guys down, so the temporary service of BBSI is keeping Jason on board with them. So we don't have to do the administrative part, so we're just using the temp service for Jason, but he's really doing a good job, he's starting our system. So anyway, it's kind of the update for now, everything is running smoothly. If there's any questions at any time the council has, give me a call, 'cause I can answer just about anything as far as the infrastructure goes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. You have anything else? Mary?
I, I have a question. Is the council ready to make a motion from, from executive session earlier? As far as the wave franchise?
Yeah, oh, yes. Yeah, we need to do that. And we go with that.
If I may, the council would like to make a, I need some practice anyway. A motion to approve the wave franchise agreement for cable only with that 5% cap that's from, regulated by the FCC.
Second.
Call please.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Mayor, the only other thing I want to remind everybody, tomorrow night, right here, 6 o'clock, joint meeting with the Board of Commissioners.
That's interesting.
You all have an agenda item, agenda items, that was provided by the Board of Commissioners. Now, you may or may not be aware of this, but the only items on that whole list that we submitted for discussion was marijuana, green energy, and public transportation. All the rest of those are coming from the Board of Commissioners.
Wow.
Should be an interesting discussion.
Those fish plans are, we're not sure, and. It's cool. Marine Preserves, we can answer those.
Yeah, I think it's great.
Yeah.
So tomorrow night, 6 o'clock.
Unfortunately, I won't be able to make it because of my work schedule. Is that a problem, or?
Yeah, we're gonna be fired. We're gonna be fired.
Yeah, we have to Skype, I'll fill you a screen.
Oh, okay. Yeah, my husband loved that.
If you have some comments, you know?
Um, I have no comments.
Steve?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment about City Day at the Capitol. I had the opportunity to be with the mayor there last Thursday. And one item that I was very interested in was the mental health initiative for the state. So I learned a lot more about that, and it reinforced our putting, the council putting that on the agenda. I did learn that it's expected of us in, to do a grassroots analysis of what our needs are in the county. So since we put this on the agenda, I do have, I volunteered to take the lead on this. I have a contact from Lincoln County School District, who was Nate Figerson, who is here to work with. There are two folks from Family Promise. Newport has put mental health on their agenda. I spoke to Doc, Mayor Don Williams, who is going to put mental health on, not Lincoln City.
Oh, Lincoln City, oh, they do.
Mental health on their agenda. And the county, Bill Hall is leading the county on this. So we're, we have the grassroots effort started. And so I'm having another meeting this Friday with the small group, and it will expand. So I think we're gonna have an opportunity to do a grassroots effort here, which will lead to someone, possibly a nonprofit partnering up with the cities and all that, to apply for some grants to meet our needs. And it's mostly focused on crisis response and first aid at this level, rather than continuing to use 911 as the only way to get mental health assistance. So that's what the goal is, is to try and have us out here respond in some way that makes more sense to help folks in crisis.
Thanks, Mary.
I do have one comment. I think it is, in comparison to Mr. Gambino, when he suggested that he wasn't a bully for not being able to be heard, I raised my hand a lot, see, me and myself, I wasn't a fan sort of on. But I just think that it's really hard for all of us to try to get in what we're saying, and maybe sometimes you just need to be a little bit more aggressive to get your attention. So I would just like to say that I don't think we're bullies, that we're all just here on the same page.
Good.
No, nothing to say.
Just very briefly on the same thing. I want to apologize, Robert, for not recognizing you at all. Try to do better in the future for everyone. But if I'm looking one way, and somebody nods or makes a noise or something, then of course, they'll be recognized immediately. But basically, I'd say, if I'm looking over here, I can't see what's going there, and so on. But I do apologize for not recognizing you. I'll try to do better in the future. And one other thing, yes, I'll be there at the Dr. Seuss thing, but I have a meeting at 5:30 on the Harbor Master Plan project. So I probably won't be able to, if that's at 5:30, I probably won't be able to get over there and talk about. So I probably won't be able, if that's at five thirty, I probably won't be able to get on there and talk about, uh, quarter after six and then.
That's all I have, yeah? Robert? Well, my only comment is on that same issue, only because Catherine brought it up. I, I think, I guess I should be a little more lenient with some of the newer members here. However, I gotta say that, uh, it is your responsibility to know how means are run. Now they are effectively run, even to the point of rules of order. They are definitely not being adhered to. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
You're on.
Yeah, I'm fine. That's good.
Well, it's four minutes after nine. We're adjourned.